Oh, that was weak. Let me do that again. There we go. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 23, 2022 Mayor and Council Work Session. Tonight, we have one topic for discussion. We're going to be receiving an update from our partners in Montgomery County on the Maryland 355 BRT project. But before we get to that, we, for those of you who didn't realize it, we had a book festival this weekend, and it was an enormous, giant success. And I wanted to take just a couple of minutes to say a few words of thanks about and appreciation about the book festival. And I'm going to read from a post that I put on Facebook this morning. In order for our book festival to be as epic and amazing as it was yesterday, so many millions of things had to come together. So many people had jobs to do, large and small, paid and unpaid. So many authors, poets, workshop leaders, introducers, exhibitors, booksellers, vendors, sponsors, and performers had to show up. And it's amazing, like we refer to it in the singular, but the book festival is really like 100 events that happened in an eight-hour period. So I wanted to thank everybody who planned, executed, participated in, and/or attended the 2022 Gaithersburg Book Festival. As a matter of background, our book festival may be the most grassroots book event in the nation. It's the only one that I know of that's fully put on by a community. Most are organized by booksellers, universities, media outlets, or larger governments, like state governments. And because of that, every aspect of our festival is infused with the DNA of our Gaithersburg and surrounding Montgomery County community. Yesterday, we delivered an outstanding cultural event for everyone in the region in a beautiful setting, organized like clockwork. It's a statement of what a community can build and present to the world. And it was a proud day for all of us, and I love our community. And I want to particularly, since we're here at a city meeting, I want to particularly call out all of our staff. There were people who were involved. Obviously, this is led by our Parks Recreation Culture Department and our regional events team. And the lead planner on the festival is Carolyn Crosby, and she works under Shelley Williams, and she works hand-in-hand with Jenny Cottrell. And they play the lead. But every single department, I saw people at the festival participating, helping, making it what it is. And we could not do it without the buy-in of all the people up here at the dais, and we could not do it without the buy-in of our staff. And I hope everybody shares in the pride for what we did. And I am tremendously profoundly grateful to everybody who participated. So I wanted to put that out there. While we're at it, does anybody want to say a word before we move forward about the book festival? Denise?
Thank you, Mayor. Just as my first in-person book festival, I want to say I am in awe of the effort, the seamless way in which staff and volunteers came together to put on, really, a massive event under, you know, some interesting conditions. And it was really, I am truly proud to be affiliated with such a hardworking, professional group that are able to pull off something like this. I heard, you know, unsolicited feedback from folks participating at how well-done it was. I was standing in line to check in at the tent to get my introducer badge behind a couple of authors who said, oh, this is fantastic. We've never been to something so organized. This is our first time here, and this is amazing. Thank you for doing this. And, you know, from those kinds of comments to the laughter of kids and just everything that happened, all the joy I saw yesterday, and to know that our staff plays a tremendous role in making that happen for the community, and I couldn't be more proud of them.
Thank you, Denise.
Yeah, I'd like to add one thing is that, you know, it's not uncommon for members of the public to let us know when things aren't right. But I'll tell you, a large number of people during the course of the event came up to me to say, please share with the staff and the city and the committee what a great event this is, how incredibly well-organized it is, and how much they value this event as part of our city. So I wanted to pass that along. It's really, people were looking for people to thank for the event.
That's awesome. All right. Unless anybody else? Okay. I'm not seeing anybody rearing to go. So let's move on to our discussion topic, and I will turn it over to Rob Robinson from Planning Code.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor Ashman and members of the council. I'm pleased to introduce tonight Joanna Conklin and Corey Pitts from Montgomery County, who are here to brief the council on an update on the 355 BRT. The city's been a long advocate for this transit line, and the council was last briefed by these folks in 2019 as they were developing the alternatives analysis and finalizing. Since then, through a pandemic, they've achieved 25% design and are moving forward with that. So it was a good time, again, to bring our friends in today to update the council. So with that, I'll turn it over to Corey.
Welcome.
Thank you, Rob, Mayor and Council. So these are the topics we'll go over. We'll go over just a very quick overview and recap. I see some faces that weren't on the council when we last came to you in 2019. Then we'll walk through kind of where the project currently sits. We just wrapped up, or wrapping up, our budget and phasing process as part of our capital improvements project budget. I'll talk about some of the design updates, touch very briefly on the Lake Forest Mall and Transit Center, because that was a topic of discussion back in 2019 as well, where we're going in terms of public outreach, and the next steps. So in terms of the purpose of the project, we're trying to provide an improved transit service that provides greater travel speed and frequency along the Maryland 355 corridor. And there's a number of objectives that this project's trying to achieve in terms of improving mobility, improving safety, expanding ridership and opportunities, supporting redevelopment and growth along the corridor. The project's really trying to achieve a number of objectives. If you recall from back in 2019, the project goes from Bethesda all the way up into Clarksburg. We are focused on seven discrete design segments, and these are really based on the characteristics of the 355 corridor. And I'll focus in on segments four, five, and six, because those are the ones that land within the city limits. So we are at the 25% design milestone, as Rob mentioned, and we're working towards the 35% milestone, which is the end of what we call preliminary engineering, and we hope to reach that milestone later this year. Through the county's budgeting process, we're currently considering, or actually, really, we have considered, funding for planning, design, and construction of not just this BRT corridor, but other BRT corridors in the county. So we are preliminary engineering. We hope to wrap that up by the end of this calendar year, early next year, and then move into final design, which we anticipate funding will get ultimately approved. It's gone through the reconciliation process, and we don't see any issues with the funding that's being proposed for the project. Final design will last another couple of years, and then construction, again, anticipated for funding of a phase, which I'll touch on here briefly, would start in 2025 and last for roughly three years with the start of the first service in 2028. Throughout all of this process, there'll be continued public engagement with our corridor advisory committee, as well as our stakeholders, such as yourselves, and the public at large. So in terms of the capital budget and the project phasing, so we anticipate, as part of the county's capital budget, funding for final design of the entire project. So that would be the 22 miles from Bethesda to Clarksburg. The project gets phased when we start talking about construction. So the central phase has funding identified for final design and construction. That phase goes roughly from Montgomery College in Rockville up to Montgomery College in Germantown, so that would include all of the portions within the city of Gaithersburg. The north and south phases are funded for final design. As I mentioned, the entire project is funded for final design, but there wasn't enough construction funding identified to fund the construction of the south and northern phases. So we're continuing to look for funding opportunities to support those two phases and get them advanced as quickly as we can. But right now, the focus is on trying to get that central phase through design and into construction as quickly as we can. So in terms of the design update, following our update with you back in 2019, which called for a primarily median dedicated BRT going through segments four, five, and six as a single median lane, the feedback that we heard from city staff and the council was that the impacts in segment five, which is kind of the segment from Summit Avenue to roughly Maryland 124, Montgomery Village Avenue, were just too extreme for the single median lane. So we've reverted that back to a mixed-traffic segment. So in segment four, you'll have a single bidirectional median BRT lane running through the middle of Maryland 355. As we come up to Summit Avenue, that would transition into mixed traffic. And then as we come back out the other side of the city, north of Montgomery Village Avenue, we would transition back into the single bidirectional median BRT lane and then up towards segment seven. And you can see some rough images of what that would look like. So the single median lane would be separated from traffic. The mixed traffic means that the bus operates with all the other vehicles traveling along the roadway corridor. The station design is also moving forward. The station design is very closely mirrored to the US-29 flash stations, which are currently operational for about over a year now. There have been some minor design tweaks that I'll point out. The station marker, which is the tall blue structure, has been pulled out of the station canopies. The original concept had it nested as part of the canopy, and we learned that during construction, it's a really difficult piece to try and get all those three components to fit together perfectly, accounting for construction constraints and tolerances. So we've pulled the marker out so that those tolerances don't need to be as tight. We've redesigned the marker so that not all of the electronics would be embedded in it. They'll be embedded in a different screen located under the station canopies. And in terms of all the other improvements, they're generally the same. We're looking at larger canopies based on feedback that we've received on the US-29 service to provide more coverage of the station platform, as well as providing more opportunities for seating. So this is what a station would look like. This is in a specific location along the corridor at the median locations. And then in the locations where the bus would be running in the curb lane, so this would be the mixed-traffic segments, and we do have one segment of curb-running BRT. The station would be located on the side of the road, so pedestrians would pass either through the station or around the back of the station, depending on how much space is available. But the stations themselves would look the same. We're also updating our service plan, or how the buses would actually operate and serve the corridor, based on the focus on the central phase. So the full plan for the full 24 miles includes a collection of four routes. This central phase would only include three initial routes as part of that. So there would be the initial routes that would start up in the Germantown area, one likely starting around the Milestone Parking Ride, the other likely starting at the Germantown Transit Center. And then both of those routes would make their way to Lake Forest, where the three routes would convene. The third route would start at Lake Forest and then travel the remainder of the corridor down to Montgomery College, where it would terminate. And the other two routes would terminate at Shady Grove, where we expect the lion's share of the ridership coming out of the north to terminate and transfer to the metro. The routes themselves would operate on very high frequencies, and where they overlap, that frequency gets even greater, coming down to a frequency as short as three minutes, where all three routes would overlap. If you recall from the last update that we gave back in 2019, we had the route going around Lake Forest Mall via Lost Knife Road so that it can make the connection to the Lake Forest Transit Center. The Lake Forest Transit Center is very important as a transit hub, and we wanted to make that connection. However, as we continue to study that and look at it, as well as review the feedback that we received from the community, that diversion off of the 355 corridor was just proving to be too great. It was adding a lot of travel time for the people that were traveling through the area. Works great for the people who are just destined for the Transit Center, but if you're traveling either beyond it to the north or beyond it to the south, it'd add a lot of trip diversion to your trip and would impact ridership. So we've now reoriented the route to go up Russell Avenue, and as such, would desire a relocation of the Lake Forest Transit Center, which is called for in the master plan. We have developed just one concept. This is a concept that we would like to work with, the owner of the mall site, as well as city staff and other stakeholders in the area, to find a suitable location and design that would fit and integrate in with the development or redevelopment of the mall. But this is just one concept of how that could be achieved and suit the routing that we're currently proposing along Russell Avenue. As I mentioned, we would like to see it integrated in with the redevelopment of the mall, and there's a number of ways that this can be achieved. And these are just a couple of examples of transit centers in other locations that do a really great job of integrating in with the surrounding redevelopment or development. We're also getting ready to do a very large public outreach effort throughout the end of this month, in the month of June, which is why we wanted to come to you and give you all an update before we get too far into that. We've got over a dozen in-person pop-up events scheduled at locations along the corridor. So these aren't traditional meetings in a single space where we hope a lot of people will come visit us, but we're actually going to go out into the community to some of the major shopping centers, transit centers, farmers' markets, and other locations along the corridor and meet where people are. So we've got 12 locations along the corridor, four of which are located within the city, where we'll hope to hear feedback on the project. We've also got four scheduled virtual events. So these will be virtual meetings where we'll have people that can maybe either don't want to attend in person or can't attend in person, come and meet with us virtually, view presentation materials, and engage with staff and ask questions. And then in addition to that, we're doing something kind of new for us, kind of phone office hours. So two days a week, Mondays and Wednesdays, throughout most of the month of June, we'll have someone staffing a phone, and people can call in and ask questions or talk about the project and leave comments that way as well. So a lot of opportunities to get the word out or collect feedback. We've also got a survey that just went live today. So we're hoping lots of people will engage with us through the survey and leave comments and feedback. I'll just note that there is a chance to win a $50 gift card. We'll do a random drawing out of the people that decide to leave their contact information through that. So hopefully, that'll entice more people to participate, because we really do want that feedback as we move towards the 35% design. So next steps, the county's capital budget is almost fully adopted. We expect that to be adopted by the end of this month, but we don't anticipate any further changes in what I talked about and touched on in terms of the BRT budget for 355. The public and stakeholder engagement will go through the month of June. And then once we wrap that up, we'll start digesting that and looking at how that will influence the design going forward. The big milestone is completing that 35% design milestone by the end of this year, and then continuing with public and stakeholder engagement at that 35% design milestone and into the final design efforts. If you need to get in touch with anyone on the project, our project manager couldn't be here tonight. She's actually just left for a much-deserved vacation. But you can contact her or myself if you have any follow-up questions. And there is the project website, which will have all the updated materials, as well as the survey.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation, the update. As people who follow this body know and the project know, we've regarded this project as important, and we've been very supportive. And, you know, years ago, we put money into our own study of how to get through the choke points over at Father Cuddy Bridge and elsewhere, because it is important to the city. And so I think it's really good news that the funding's there to get us potentially through design and construction. The issue, I see that'll have to be worked out, and to some degree, will be out of our hands, will be how the potential relocation of the Transit Center and working with the new owner of Lake Forest Mall property. As you guys, I'm sure, know, our recently revised master plan for the property does contemplate the relocation. And so we've sort of set the table for this negotiation, and we'll be interested to see a way that, you know, if the county and the property owner can work out an optimal way to get that done and find something that works for everybody, that would be great. But, you know, some of it's just sort of out of our hands, and we'll try to facilitate as we can. I think, I feel like I'm capturing where our council and staff would be on that. So that's the one point. I want to open it up for council members who'd like to speak on it. Go ahead, Ryan, and then Jim.
Just going to take my mask off just for a minute to make some comments. I'll echo everything that I think the mayor said very well. Thank you for your presentation and for your work on this project. I think we're all pretty aware that transit is a pretty heavily utilized mode of travel in Montgomery County generally, certainly, you know, not on the measure of cars, as Councilmember Harris has discussed with us many times. But particularly when we're talking about the emphasis on equity and the equity emphasis areas that planners have been focused on of late, I do think it's important to acknowledge that the communities around this particular transit center location reflect particularly historically disadvantaged segments of our community that rely disproportionately heavily on transit. And so we need to take that into consideration, I think, when we are discussing the plans for this particular center, which I think is, you know, is an absolutely key stop. It's currently a key stop on the, I think, the busiest ride-on bus route in the county and will be a key stop for the flash system. And I believe it's the third-highest of the stops along the corridor behind Rockville and Shady Grove Metro stations. So, I mean, think about that. When you think about our entire county and the route, how important, you know, a node this is in our transit plans and infrastructure. And the mayor already talked about how our revised master plan already reflects a desire from the city to appropriately relocate the transit center so that we can gain those efficiencies through the flash system and through, I guess, flash is now what we're calling BRT, right? And through our, you know, our other bus-centered transit systems along 355. But I just wanted to make that point about the equity emphasis areas, because I don't want that to get lost in the conversation of the technical aspects of, you know, whether the transit center's going to be moved and, you know, all these other aspects of the design phase. And I also just wanted to take a minute to thank the county and the county executive and the administration for the significant investment here. I mean, we shouldn't let it get lost in the shuffle that $400 million is on the table and presumably will be approved in this year's budget for this project over the next, what, six years? That is an extremely significant investment in this transit system. And so I think I speak for all of us when I say we're appreciative of that and looking forward to working together with the county, with the property owner, with the other stakeholders on these community meeting phases that are coming up, and really trying to come to a cooperative solution on how we can maximize the location of the center, the investment in a new transit center, and really make sure that this flash system is successful. So thanks.
We'll go to Jim.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to meet you. I am one of the new faces up here, obviously. So for people who maybe aren't as familiar with kind of the history of the project, I've been following it to a point, but there are definitely some of the finer details that I am not as familiar with. Will the flash be similar to the Extra program that's currently operating on 355? Limited stops, those kinds of things?
So I guess in terms of kind of thinking it as a tier, this would be a tier above the Extra service. So yes, limited stops and transit signal priority, which the Extra does bring to the corridor. So the transit signal priority helps the bus progress along the corridor by stealing seconds at intersections, either holding a green light a little bit longer or advancing a red signal to green sooner so that the bus can continue moving along the corridor. In addition to that, the dedicated lanes will be something that the Extra service doesn't have. So that'll be the bus moving along the corridor without the impacts of congestion where we have those dedicated lanes. So the dedicated lanes aren't everywhere, but there are segments where it'll have its own dedicated lane. Offboard fare collection, so pulling that fare activity off of the bus itself will help speed up the boarding process and allow people to get on the bus through really any door along the bus, whereas currently, everyone has to queue up. In a world where we collect fares, I know that we're not collecting fares during the pandemic, but prior to the pandemic, when we collected fares, everyone had to queue up at the front door and interact with the fare box. This way, the bus will pull up, all the doors will open, people will exit the bus, people will board the bus, and the bus will be on its way. So it's many different things that go together to make for a speedier and a more reliable service.
Great. Thank you very much. And this may be premature at this 25% design stage, but in considering the transitions between the different segments, so for example, from segment five, where it won't be a dedicated lane, up to Summit Avenue, which is right outside City Hall, transitioning to the dedicated lane, how is that transition expected to work? Particularly thinking about here, where you'll have Summit Avenue, you'll have the churches, you'll have the high school, you'll have the new Wawa. Just thinking about how does the bus get from the far right into that middle lane?
So ideally, those transitions would happen at a signalized intersection so that we can then kind of advance signal the bus. So, you know, if it's approaching the intersection and it's red, it would get its own dedicated advanced signal to then jump into the lane. Some of the other things that we're looking at are kind of slip lanes, much like you have on kind of a highway, but it would allow the bus to kind of get into and out of the dedicated guideway. And those would happen prior to intersections as well so that by the time it reaches the intersection, it can progress through the intersection. So those are definitely details that now that we're in kind of the design phase of the project, we're working through how that works so that that works seamlessly so that those don't become bottlenecks for the bus or for traffic. We don't want to also mess up the existing traffic patterns that happen along the corridor. We're trying to make this a seamless, something that we thread, you know, a needle through the corridor.
Thank you. That's definitely one of my concerns. You know, it's obviously an important addition to our transit options, but that corridor is a challenge already with vehicle traffic. And the thought of it getting worse because of this is definitely scary. So I'm glad to hear that you're thinking about that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Jim. We'll go to Lisa.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to meet you. And I am the other new face. I wasn't here in 2019. Thank you for the presentation. And I also want to say thank you for the outward approach to public outreach, the in-person piece where you're going to go out. I view it as imperative that the public is involved and are heard and actually know what's going on so that they can make comment and really focus on what is happening and going to happen. Just a question, what led you to doing the outreach that way?
So when we thought back to how we did outreach, the last time we did a major push, we did kind of traditional open houses. We scheduled, I think, two or three along the corridor at various locations. I think one of them was up here at Borde Park near the high school. I think one of them was up here at Borah Park near the high school. And there's a lot of effort that goes into that. We spend lots of staff time creating boards and materials and presentations. And what we've found is that we're not really getting huge turnout. I mean, evening meetings are difficult for people's schedules. I have kids, you know, it's just difficult to kind of fit that into everyone's busy life. So this way, we tried to do kind of more of a tiered approach so that there are many different ways that we engage and that people can engage with us so that people can kind of choose what works best for them. During the pandemic, we definitely transitioned to a completely virtual form of engagement. We found that that actually introduced us to new people that we hadn't been engaging with previously because now I can sit in the comfort of my home and, you know, engage with someone through a screen. And if my kids are running crazy in the background or, you know, if I need to pay attention to dinner, like I haven't had to carve out an hour or two hours of my evening to attend this meeting, I can kind of try and slot it in. So that's really what guided the approach was trying to find, you know, strategic ways to get at the people through as many different ways as we can. Some of those virtual meetings were actually going to hold during the middle of the day. So again, not just a traditional evening-type meeting, but something in the middle of the day so that perhaps a shift worker who works that evening shift can now engage with us, say, for a noon-type meeting.
Thank you for that thoughtfulness, and I'd be interested to know the outcome, particularly weighing in against how you've done it in the past.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Neil.
So a couple of questions. First of all, how are things going with the Route 29 BRT? It's been in place for a little while now. I'm just curious, since it's not in our neighborhood, I have no real data on how things are going with it. Is it gaining the ridership? Is it achieving the goals that you've set out?
So it's definitely growing ridership. I would say, you know, it hasn't met the opening day projections, but those projections were made under a world where we didn't have COVID. So it's not surprising that we haven't met those. But what I will say is that for a route that we started during a pandemic, it's been a pretty successful route. Like it's competing with some of the other top routes in the county already, and that was without a heavy marketing push because we held back on that just because of the pandemic and some of the other challenges that it's faced. The feedback that we've received from the people who are using the service has been extremely positive in terms of how they feel the service is working for them and what it's providing. So all indicators are that it's been very positive and hopefully, you know, as things return to some kind of sense of normalcy, we will see that ridership continue to move up the way that we've seen it from the start.
So is it, do you see it increasing the number of people that are using transit versus other modes versus automobiles at this point?
That's a difficult question for us to answer at this stage. You know, I anticipate that as things start to get back to normal, we'll probably do some more structured surveys to understand who's riding it. Right now, we're just kind of doing straight counts of, you know, who's getting on and off the bus, but not a real targeted ridership survey to understand like who's riding it, why they're riding it, and how they've changed their travel patterns.
Yeah, deciding to launch this during a pandemic was probably not optimal for getting that kind of data, I understand. Thank you. So on a different note, we've had some feedback from the, from the new owner of the Lake Forest property regarding the conversations they've had with the organization about the needs for the transit center. What is it exactly that you're looking for aside from where it's going to be? Are you looking for a bigger transit center or a different setup than what's currently existing?
So the current transit center is actually under, or I'm sorry, overcapacity. There was a study done before I came to the county, probably five years ago, that determined that we needed more base space with the existing transit center. So that we know with no flash, this transit center is undersized. Layering in the flash service, there is a need for additional bay capacity at the transit center. And then in terms of location, as I mentioned, the current routing that was proposed back in 2019, carrying the bus all the way around Lost Knife, really added quite a bit of time to the flash route. So there's a desire to pull that transit center closer to 355 to reduce the diversion and better facilitate those transfers. So those are the two primary drivers of why we're looking for a relocated and a slightly larger facility than what currently exists on the street today.
All right, thank you.
All right. Our colleague, Rob Wu, texted me that he's watching from home and wants to participate via Zoom, and I see him on the Zoom. So tech team, if you could bring up Rob, that would be great. Rob, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Rob Wu usually resides in that seat between council member Harrison and city manager Riley. Just want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, for Corey for his presentation. I wouldn't have been there a person but for a plumbing issue that happened right as I was heading out the door, as they always happen. Thanks for the presentation. I think a lot of my questions were answered by my colleagues. One question I do have is, you know, with respect to section five and going into mixed lane traffic, one of the benefits that I think from a BRT and the structure of BRT is kind of the ability to remake the streetscape. And so the area north of Cuddy Bridge through, you know, Oden Hall or Montgomery Village Avenue, it's, as council member McNulty mentioned, it's trying for traffic, it's also trying for pedestrians. And so if you ever frequent that area, you know, you'll, you'll see mid-block, there's a lot of barriers to getting across the street. There's not very good mid-block crossings, and the crossings at intersections are, you know, pretty far between. And so I guess the question I've got is if we're, if we are rethinking that to be a mixed lane traffic with no center median access for the bus lane, is there, are there plans to work with S H A in order to improve the streetscape? So along 355 where there are bus stops, you know, being able to have more pedestrian-friendly ways to cross the street, for example, I think would be a priority in that area. And so I just wanted to hear, are there plans right now or in the future in order to have those discussions with the stakeholders?
So no concrete plans of anything through conversations we've had with the state on changing the streetscape in that particular segment. I guess what I will say is that we're open to those opportunities if the state is willing to entertain them and the city is, you know, in, I guess, in agreement as a stakeholder on that. What I can say is that the project is looking at numerous opportunities to improve safety along the corridor. So at any location along the corridor where we currently have what are called free rights or slip rights, where the traffic doesn't have to come to kind of a traditional stop and make a 90-degree turn, but can kind of sweep through the intersection kind of via a slip ramp, we're looking at removing those at every intersection as part of our Vision Zero efforts. So that's not to say that every intersection will get that, but every intersection is being looked at critically to see, to see what can be done from a safety perspective to improve safety. And those are one of the things that we have identified that can definitely improve pedestrian safety at intersections. We're also upgrading all of the signalized intersections to have four-leg crosswalks as some intersections don't currently have all legs striped with crosswalks. Some of that's for a particular reason, so maybe not every intersection along the corridor will get four-leg crosswalks, but that's a goal of ours is to try and get more striped crosswalks to, again, raise the visibility to drivers, raise the visibility to pedestrians, that this is a pedestrian space and they should be there. In terms of where the stations are located, those will be located in locations that make sense from a crossing perspective, and there'll be upgrades made to those. We're also looking at bike and pedestrian enhancements along the corridor and throughout the corridor to facilitate better and safer access to the station. So it's a lot to get into and, you know, happy to have, you know, more detailed conversations with staff at the city to kind of get into those details and that they can pass along to you all. And definitely, if you all have ideas, we're happy to consider those and see if they make sense to incorporate as part of the project or perhaps as part of another safety program that the county has.
Okay, yeah, no, I appreciate that, and it sounds good that you're at least thinking about that area. And I do commend the county on its Vision Zero efforts, you know, it certainly, you know, I think makes a difference. I certainly think that this area can benefit from that kind of focus and, you know, being one vote on one of the stakeholders. It would be a priority of mine to make sure that we can do upgrades as we're bringing BRT into, not just to moving cars along, but also to making it safer for pedestrians and mixed modal transportation. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. That was my only question.
Okay, thank you, Rob.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add to that?
Yes, please.
I just want to kind of amplify what council member Wu was talking about. That particular section from Oden Hall down to Chestnut is about four tenths of a mile, and there are no signals in that space. And you will see currently lots of pedestrians trying to cross from one side to the other because there are no crosswalks. So I think what might be helpful, you know, in addition to that, the sidewalks themselves are relatively substandard. Having attempted to ride my bike down there, it's a bit of a challenge as it stands. So if there are opportunities in this particular section to improve pedestrian safety, bicyclist safety, and perhaps, you know, add some crossing opportunities there, obviously it is a state road, I think the council would be pretty supportive of being able to make that a safer stretch.
Okay.
Just as a matter of background, Rob Robinson, we, in terms of setting expectations here with the state, I think these are, these are good ideas and we'd love to see improvements. We have approached the state many times about that stretch of 355, and what's been our success rate?
It's very difficult, and Corey can jump in, and for the mayor and council member Spiegel and Harris, they may remember Corey was our lead consultant on our studies as we originally looked before he went to the county. Part of the issue with that section that council member McNulty was talking about, you know, on average, you know, most of the right-of-way more or less for 355 is 125 feet. That section is down to 95 feet. And part of the problem is, we totally agree, it has substandard sidewalks, we have utility poles in the middle of it. So there's a lot of challenges there. The state's position, and Joanna and Corey can correct me, typically, they don't begin changing stuff till somebody touches something. So, you know, with going through mixed traffic, you know, we continue to advocate, but because of the constraints with that small amount of right-of-way, hence why the BRT itself is going in mixed traffic and not central, because again, we would be taking out most of the buildings, you know, all the buildings along that one section are very close. So not that anything is insurmountable, but there are definite engineering challenges and property challenges with, you know, potentially getting, you know, even an eight-foot shared-use path through that section. So I agree with Corey, you know, any opportunity we can explore, especially with our state partners with District Three to try to get stuff. I mean, going back in previous councils, you know, we'd even advocated for doing away with the bidirectional turn lane, center turn lane, just to try to get a constructed median there to potentially maybe, you know, shift some lanes and, you know, get stuff working. I think a lot of it'll come down as these folks move into 35% and continue to analyze the impacts on traffic, that may open up opportunities, if I'm wrong. You know, there may be a chance to, you know, change the geometry maybe of the lanes themselves and get some additional within the existing right-of-way space. But we've always said in the state, I mean, one of the advantages, much as the county's adopting, you know, their Vision Zero aspects, the state is also going through a similar process. So hopefully, you know, continued advocacy from our council and others on some of these state roads may begin to affect change. But, but, you know, the challenges, the overhead utilities, the three-and-a-half-foot-wide sidewalks right on curb, you know, property lanes, you know, all of this stuff just compounds. Sorry, I can't give you a definitive answer about why, you know, A, B, or C, why it hasn't occurred, but...
John?
I just wanted to add that we are getting a new additional signalized intersection at Dalamar as part of the Megamart development. That will provide a pedestrian crossing, which doesn't exist now, between Chestnut and Oden Hall.
That's an excellent point.
Yeah.
And then good improvement. Good, good. Okay, I am not really seeing members of the public in front of me, but there, is there anybody on Zoom who'd like to testify? If so, please use your Zoom raise hand function. Not seeing anybody raise their hands. Okay. Well, this has been a good update, enlightening in many ways, and we look forward to how this progresses, both with street improvements and with the, with the Lake Forest property and the transit center. And, you know, we feel like we're everybody's partners here. We want to get the best, optimal thing done for, for our residents and get some real transit in the city of Gaithersburg. It's exciting. So thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
And with that, I will note that we do not have a meeting, a work session, next week on the 30th, which is Memorial Day, of course. The next regular meeting of the mayor and council will be on Monday, June 6th, at 7:30 PM, and you can participate in person or over Zoom, just like, just like tonight. And until next time, oh, actually, before I sign off, I will mention that we have two things coming up this weekend. Saturday, at 11:00 AM, there is the Flags for Our Heroes, which is not a city thing, it's, Rotary Clubs do it in partnership with the city. Where if you go by Borah Park, you will see an amazing display of American flags in honor of people who've made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And the dedication of that will be Saturday at 11:00 AM, and please join us there. And then Monday, the 30th, I believe it's 11:00 AM, let me just look at my calendar real quick. It is...
It's 11:00.
11:00 AM, thank you, thank you, Michelle. We have our Memorial Day observance at Crisman Park on West Deer Park Road. So please join us at that. We'd love to have people join us. And with that, until next time, let's do great things, Gaithersburg. We are adjourned.